I would like to call to order the Equity Diversity-
Thank you so much. Thank you Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Perkins, members of the School Committee, and the Senior Leadership Team for your support and for providing the opportunity to contribute to fostering a welcoming and inclusive community for all students and staff. I am deeply honored and genuinely excited to be part of the Quincy Public Schools, where I have had the privilege of collaborating with exceptionally talented staff and students who consistently pursue excellence. It has been a highly rewarding experience to see how much we are able to accomplish as a district from year to year. Before going into a reflection on the progress of the past year's four goals, I'd like to highlight the information shared on Page Four of the DEI Program Improvement Plan, which talks about the challenges with our state's teacher pipeline. Massachusetts is experiencing an alarming decrease of enrollees into teacher preparation programs in comparison to the nationwide enrollment. According to a report by the Learning Policy Institute, over the past five years, Massachusetts experienced a 34.6% decrease in enrollees versus just a .6 decrease nationally into teacher preparation programs. Additionally, completers of these programs decreased by 21.9% in Massachusetts versus a 4.1 increase nationally. So, in other words, Massachusetts has 34% less enrollees and 26% less completers than the nationwide averages. The impact of this decline is further compounded for aspiring teachers of diverse backgrounds, who only make up 13% to 14% of those enrolled in teacher preparation programs. To tackle these challenges, we are forging partnerships with colleges and universities to offer discounted and free coursework or degree programs for both staff and students. We are collaborating with other districts to connect staff with opportunities for advanced education and pursuing grant funding to create meaningful experiences for high school students, such as working as interns in our schools. Additionally, we are providing MTEL support and implementing initiatives to retain staff from diverse backgrounds. Last year, our primary objective for workforce diversity was to develop and implement structures, tools, and partnerships designed to establish a robust pipeline system aimed at enhancing the diversity of the district's workforce. Building a teacher work pipeline, however, poses challenges in demonstrating short-term impact. While we have observed promising anecdotal indicators, such as high school education interns returning as substitute paraprofessionals and expressing interest in teaching careers, the full impact may take several years to materialize as they transition into educator roles. To date, our progress has been evaluated primarily by the breadth and number of support initiatives introduced, with our goals focused on expanding these opportunities. A detailed summary of the opportunities made available to staff and students this year is provided on Page Six of the plan. Among these opportunities, we secured three full scholarships for our Masters in Education with a focus on moderate disabilities at La Salle University, emphasizing support for multilingual students learning English with disabilities. Through Regis College, we were able to enroll nine QPS students, participating in a three-week residential program, earning six college credits and also receiving a $2,000 stipend upon completion. Additionally, Stone Hill College and Regis offered free coursework and certificate programs in DEI and culturally responsive teaching. As detailed in Appendix C on Page 24, we also established partnerships with local colleges and universities to offer reduced tuition for various programs, including Curry College, Leslie University, Merrimack College, and Regis College. Notably, Regis College also extends its tuition discount to family members of QPS staff. The value brought to the district through these opportunities and partnerships was approximately $172,000. As expected, hiring of diverse staff to the district has not changed significantly. Pages 17 through 19 present district data on student demographics and staff hiring trends by subgroup. Our student population continues to grow more diverse with slight increases in Asian, Black, Hispanic, and multiracial students and a slight decrease in white students. This year, we hired less staff than last year, most notably many less educators, just 65 this year as compared to 112 last year. Despite this decline, the proportion of diverse educators and paraprofessionals hired increased slightly from 19.6% last year to 21.37% this year, even as the overall percentage of diverse staff hired decreased slightly from 25 to 24.2%. Our collaboration efforts with other districts and higher education institutions saw a significant increase in reach. Building off of the success we had last year, we hosted both a bachelor's completion and a master's in education info session, where we asked partners in other districts to share the opportunities with paraprofessionals, provisional teachers, and community members. Last year's bachelor's information session had about 20 RSVPs and six attendees. This year, we had over 180 RSVPs with over 30 attendees. Last year's Master's of Education session had nine colleges and universities, and 65 participants joined. This year, we had over 20 colleges and over 100 participants joining. Several of these colleges have low-cost and convenient programs, especially for aspiring educators of color and working professionals. This year, we were fortunate to receive nearly double the amount of funding through DZ's Teacher Diversification Grant, a total of $92,000, up from $47,000. Along with $33,000, we received from the High School Senior Education Internship Project Grant. We were able to expand our high school education internship program to high school juniors as well as high school seniors, while partnering with our after-school programs, program providers, Q Care and Stars. This allowed us to have 60 interns this year versus 40 last year. We offered MTEL coaching to 13 people, along with vouchers for their test fees, and we were able to provide tuition reimbursement for 13 employees. Reflecting on Goal Two around closing the opportunity gap or providing programs to support our most underserved students, we were able to bring in the He Is Me, I Am King mentoring program to Quincy High School for two groups of boys. The program connects Black and Brown boys to a mentor that reflects their background while providing a cell curriculum. We learned last year that the program did not do as well as it could have due to competing activities in sports, so this year, it was aligned to incorporate either basketball or weightlifting. Additionally, we had two senior high school boys involved as leaders and mentors in the program, and we are proud to say that one of those high school mentors went on to college for teaching and was a part of our first future educator signing ceremony. As mentioned briefly in Snug Harbor's School Improvement Plan presentation, we were able to begin planning for implementation of Raising Multicultural Kids Diversity in Classroom Leadership and Literature Program at Snug Harbor and Marymount. We connected RMK through Q Cares, who had brought them into their after-school programming. RMK shares a common goal with QPS of developing future educators of diverse backgrounds and cultivating a multicultural mindset while empowering students in positive civic engagement. We look forward to continued work with them to expand programming to other elementary schools as well as to the middle and high schools. Goal Three was around creating a safe and supportive environment by developing or collaborating on professional development or creating and supporting DEI networks to advance DEI work in schools. In collaboration with the Senior Director of Student Support, Mara Papil, we have conducted with the Alliance for Inclusion and Prevention in Harvard's EASL Lab to partner on an initiative called Select Schools, which stands for Cell, Equity, COVID, and Trauma, which will support elementary teachers to implement kernels or bite-sized strategies for social-emotional learning. A more detailed description of the work and examples of kernels can be found in Appendix F. We also collaborated with Director of Curriculum Mike Morani to provide culturally responsive teaching professional development to our new educators. Goal Four of identifying and contributing to refining systems, policies, approaches to increase our ability to attract, hire, and retain diverse educators and create tools to support staff was met through expanding the reach of our job postings on platforms such as Handshake, LinkedIn, Mass Hire, and the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. We collaborated with Director of Curriculum, Human Resources, and our Ed Prep partners to refine the Practicum Student Tracking System in hopes of being able to mine leads for candidates in the future. We conducted a training on anti-bias hiring with all principals, and we increased the frequency of DEI newsletters to all staff and to diverse staff and families. Looking forward to this year, all of the DEI goals will be continuous, and growth in each area is what we will strive for. The goals for this year are as follows. Goal Number One, to increase workforce diversity, we aim to establish at least three additional structures, tools, or partnerships to build a robust teacher pipeline. One significant initiative we are pursuing is the Massachusetts Inaugural Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. This program offers aspiring educators the opportunity to gain hands-on experience working in school districts while simultaneously completing their academic studies. The program provides funding for a limited number of districts, which can be allocated at their discretion, such as covering tuition costs or salaries. While the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education acknowledges that the most significant pipeline gap occurs between high school and college, many of the grant applicants are focusing their applications on funding Master's of Education programs due to their shorter path to licensure. We are excited about our ongoing discussions with the RTAP program coordinators, particularly their enthusiasm for our unique partnership with Quincy College. Through this partnership, some of our graduates will earn an associate's degree by the time they complete high school. By collaborating with a college offering a bachelor's degree program that leads to licensure, we can enable these graduates to join the apprenticeship program immediately after high school. This innovative model, uncommon in other districts, provides a seamless pathway for high school graduates to earn a living wage as paraprofessionals while obtaining a free bachelor's degree leading to licensure in just two years. We believe this approach has the potential to significantly address workforce diversity and create sustainable opportunities for aspiring educators. As mentioned last year, we have an extensive contact list with colleges that we are continually refining, and our persistent outreach seems to have had a great impact on increasing awareness of Quincy as a partner for grants as well as for potential job opportunities. At a job fair in the spring, the Quincy Table was notably the only table with a steady line of people waiting to speak with us, while other tables had very few participants approaching them. We believe our outreach efforts have increased our visibility to aspiring educators, and when we talk about Goal Number Four, we will touch on how we plan to increase our reach and support of potential educators through our website. Goal Two, we will identify and implement a minimum of two additional initiatives or programs that will support the academic and enrichment needs of our most underserved students. This will be done through strategic partnerships and applying for funding to support programming, such as DZ's Hate Crime Prevention Grant. In other school improvement plans, we've heard about the work that Raising Multicultural Kids is doing in classrooms through their diversity leaders. Another pilot we are launching this year with RMK is training our own high school students to become diversity leaders so that they can receive comprehensive training in skills that are essential to becoming a classroom teacher. We're hoping this pilot program with RMK and also Q Care can better position us for applying for the 21st Century Learning Centers Supporting Additional Learning Time Grant in 2026, which is a federally funded competitive grant that provides approximately $200,000 per school year in summer. Goal Three, for creating a supportive and safe environment, we will be looking to build more PD for staff around social-emotional development in collaboration with the Senior Director of Student Support through the Select School Programs that we were chosen for. This year will be the planning year, and the launch will be fall of 2025. We're also meeting with schools, DEI or cultural climate teams, to be able to more deeply understand their needs and also to share best practices from efforts across the district. Finally, for Goal Number Four, refining internal systems and policies, we will work with the Digital Communications and Web Accessibility Specialists to enhance the information on our website to offer comprehensive support for aspiring teachers who hope to join QPS. We will work closely with family representatives in monthly meetings to identify and build strong parent engagement opportunities. We will support the Director of Human Resources in any collaborative efforts they may launch. As far as our investment requests or areas of need, we did learn that the funding for our high school education internship program will no longer be available because it came from SRFunds. We are looking for other sources of funding or strategic partnerships to continue this critical aspect of offering internships and training towards building our teacher pipeline development strategy. That concludes my presentation. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my plan. At this time, I'd like to welcome any questions, suggestions, or feedback you may have.
Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. We just, I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, the information on Page, I think it was Page Nine. No, the information on Page Six is incredible. It's really great. It really is great. I mean, that's an incredible amount of work, so. Don't often understand, we don't see what you're doing, but now we see what you're doing. It's pretty impressive. That was a great deal of work. Very, very nice. And on Page Thirteen, I had, I think I had a question. Oh yeah, the Alana Group. How is that going? Is that, are people showing up? Are people coming in too?
Yeah, so it's a combination of meetings and a combination of opportunities. So tomorrow, we're actually having our potluck, and it'll be at the high school, if you want to pop by, the President's Cafe. Usually, those are the events that seem to draw more of our employees. We get maybe like 20, 20-ish people. And the events are like the Bachelor's Completion Sessions or the Master's of Education Sessions, to just make sure that we're connecting our staff with opportunities to, if they want to become teachers, you know, have the further education.
I actually got an email from a different district inviting me to that program. I thought that was pretty cool. And the Quincy Public Schools, I said, I know them. So it was very, it was very, it was very cool to see that kind of work being done. And on Page Eighteen, I had a question. So do you think that's helping?
The meeting, they get it, but like if you haven't come to a meeting, they don't get it. So it's just a little bit more of like getting people to say, hey, just come check it out. Because once they get there, I think that they, you know, are able to share resources, best practices, and like just having shared experiences.
Shared experiences. And on Page Eighteen, I know you were, you seemed slightly disappointed in the number, but I think 21% of our hires is pretty good.
That's a good number.
It's a very good number. I know, it's a fabulous number, so I.
I think, along with some of my-
We definitely know what you're doing.
Yeah, along with some of my peers, a little bit competitive, so.
I had one other thing. So in your, in your requests, your investment requests, the areas of need, the ability to track applicants, this is applicants to our, to our, from our HI department?
Yes, and I think that's in the works. So that's exciting, yeah.
And coaching and culturally responsive teaching practices? I know we've been doing that, we've been doing that, but are we trying to bring more coaches in to help people?
I think we're trying to bring more to whatever PD sessions that we have, and then, you know, programming for our students. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach, you know. With Raising Multicultural Kids, our teachers get to see how that diversity leader, you know, facilitates those conversations. So I think, you know, that that's also a way to do it. So, you know, the more we can get any kind of programming like that.
I know, both Mrs. Hoobley and I, she's not here tonight, really love the idea of that Raising Multicultural Kids initiative. And I'm hoping that when we turn that stuff into the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee later on, to be looking at that stuff, we'll see it, because it's, it sounds great. It really does. So thank you so much for doing that. I don't have any other questions. I was really disappointed in the workforce numbers. They're really scary.
I agree.
Really scary. I mean, that's, that's really scary.
It is. So I guess sometimes people don't understand why I'm really focusing on the pipeline. It's because that's where the crisis is. I know there's a lot of kind of culture and climate and, you know, celebrations and things like that, but if we don't have diverse teachers in front of our students, then those students are never going to want to be teachers either. And so we kind of have to, you know, put our finger in the hole where it is and really get more students interested in being teachers. It's so critical.
Across the board, not just diversity. We need, it's down 34%.
Yeah.
I mean, that's scary. It's really scary.
It is.
Well, I'm good. Thank you very much. It was a great report. I really enjoyed it. I feel like I know you so much better.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Brogdon? This is for the Superintendent, Superintendent Mulvey. Do we still have partnerships with colleges who offer a degree in teaching as to attract student teachers into our system? And how many are, how many do we have a year, do you know? And how, what percentage of those we keep? Or do we keep an employee in our?
We keep a lot. We definitely do. But I'm not sure, I could, we could get that for you, how many we have right now, but.
Do you want the number of colleges and the number of students? We, we basically obtained from those colleges. Is that your question? We can work on getting you that info.
And then the other piece is, do we still offer a stipend for our educators who have student teachers in their classrooms? I know back when, we, it was like, there was a bank.
I don't think, no.
Up in his main office, where, where if you had a student teacher, you could use that to offset some of your tuition.
Yes, they can do that. So it's not from us, but it's from the college. So typically, if you have a student teacher, the college that that student teacher is from will usually give the, you know, practicum teacher a voucher to use towards a class. But it's from the cla, it's from the college. Like if it's UMass, it's from UMass.
And if that teacher doesn't use it, can it then be used systematically?
A lot, yes. Typically, it can go into like a pool, and another teacher can use it. That does happen.
It does.
The HI director has to sign it over to the person requesting to receive it. But there's no monetary stipend that we pay.
No.
No, no. I mean, just the opportunity to use that to.
Yeah, in many cases, we can transfer a voucher that's earned by another teacher to another teacher who would be interested in it. It requires the signing off of it by the HI director, which happens pretty regularly.
I mean, it's an incentive to take on student teachers if you're trying to get your master's degree or something else.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent report, Kim.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So I walked in just as you had started. But is the premise that you were saying at the beginning is what? The Learning Policy Institute suggests that the pipeline of teachers in Massachusetts has just dramatically dropped?
Right, in the last five years. So the number of enrollees, as well as the completers.
In four-year, four-year degree programs?
Their data was discussing the last five years.
And just to get a degree in teaching, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And so, I guess to Aaron and the Superintendent, I have not heard us having a shortage of applicants for jobs. Are we having a shortage of applicants for jobs? Not in Quincy.
In other cities and towns, but fortunately not in Quincy. And we don't want that to happen, so that's why we want to stay ahead of it and be proactive.
Yeah, no.
Do the pipeline and get a, you know, hopefully graduates from QPS into teaching.
Exactly, yeah. And, and so that, are you seeing that resonate with the students?
We're kind of in the beginning stages of the programming. I know that we've had the internship, I think it was one year before I got here. And then when I got here, we tried to really kind of more align it with like getting some training around teaching and like working with some students to do focus groups and things like that about teaching, to really learn like what the barriers are or what they're, you know. So we've learned a few things, you know, some of it's cultural, like their parents don't want them to be teachers. A lot of myths around like the salary and like, you know, being able to have, maintain, you know, whatever, some kind of lifestyle. So we're working with students now.
How do you reach?
Yeah.
How do you reach them to?
So we're going to be launching two teacher clubs. They're not going to be called teacher clubs, but there'll be two teacher clubs at the high schools, where I think they're going to raise it as, you know, like a social impact cause, that the shortage of teachers is going to have a lot of consequences. And so through the teacher clubs, we're hoping that, you know, through speakers and like gaining skills in different areas, that they just see teaching in another light. So that's kind of one way we're thinking. The other is through the apprenticeship program, hopefully offering, you know, basically a free bachelor's. That might help some of the families, you know, see that, you know, it's not a huge investment because of all that, you know, college loans and things like that that you have to take on. Like that can really actually get them ahead if they're able to take advantage of that. So, you know, we're trying to be creative in different ways. I think, you know, I really just kind of setting that call to action as well. Maybe our students didn't know that we wanted them to come back and be teachers, and so getting that message out as well.
Yeah, I mean, the whole concept of creating our own farm team, not to use baseball, but you know, have our own farm team would be helpful. So, I mean, those numbers, the workforce numbers are dire, and that's based on who's enrolled in teaching-related programs.
Right.
Right now in Massachusetts. Is it just here? Is it New England? Is it, is it a regional thing?
I think it's country, it's across the nation, really. Across the world, really.
I thought you said the numbers were uniquely low in Massachusetts.
I think there is a shortage in Massachusetts as compared to other states, but I think really across the world, I've been hearing that, you know, not, not as many people are going into teaching like when I was younger anyway.
Interesting. Okay, let me see, see the other thing. So love the structure of the plan, the goals of the plan, the, the. So I had a question about, you know, one of the things that we see in all the vocal surveys is how the students, you know, we can have people talk about all the books that they're doing, and yet students don't always see themselves in the books. Do you play a role in that and participate in that with the principals and?
I had a really interesting conversation at the Bernazani School, actually, because they do an amazing job with their books. I think, you know, about the parent efforts to make sure that they have no shortage of books there. And I think they're thoughtful about, you know, the content and the background. And I think they're thoughtful about, you know, the content and, and the backgrounds or that are reflected in those books. And so something that came up was that, and, and we talked about it a little bit a few weeks ago, how students might not understand that question about the book, you know, like how do you see yourself, do you feel like you're reflected in the books? And I think Mrs. Hubley made a comment like, yeah, that person doesn't have a dog, right? You know, this look. So one of the teachers had a really good idea and, and talked about doing like a lesson on windows and mirrors so that they could understand the concept of seeing yourself in a book. It's not literal, literally, you know, seeing yourself in a book, but, you know, like someone of your background, someone of your, you know, family structure. So, you know, I, I think that would, was a really smart idea to implement something like that so that they could better understand that question.
That's just in Bernazani or across the board?
Well, I shared it in the newsletter as well, just to say, you know, that's an opportunity for people to think about framing that better for our students to understand so that, you know, we get more accurate results of what's actually happening.
Yeah, I mean, it exposes them to so many different things, but it's also an opportunity to see themselves. That's going to be framed, I think.
Yes.
From the outset. The, and then. Do you, do you get involved in, in kind of the data side, the vocal side? Whether it's the vocal side or the M C A S or the MAP data and look at it and see how it disproportionately might impact different populations and?
I know Chris Tierney had given me access. We haven't gone through, you know, how to look at the data together yet. So I would say not yet, but, you know, it's something I'd be interested in.
Yeah, I mean, I was, through the school improvement plans, I was impressed that all of the principals kind of wrapped their head around chronic absenteeism, and we saw some great improvements in that. But I know that it disproportionately impacts, you know, based on economics or demographics or whatever the case may be. So just your viewpoint on that, especially if it stays chronic in those subcategories, is useful to hear.
Yeah, Mars sits right next to me, so we've talked about doing some, you know, attendance newsletters and things like that. So that's something that we'll hopefully get into the works shortly.
And from a, and I know we hear this at the school level, but from a ten-thousand-foot level, family engagement, translation, all of that, how do you see that?
It seems like, you know, all of the tools that have been implemented, S M O R and the family liaisons, translation line, like those, like I've never seen that in another district. So I feel like, you know, I feel like we're ahead of other districts in that way, especially with the population that we have, you know, speaking other languages. I guess family engagement is, is something that we're, like everyone is still trying to figure out, you know, how to do that successfully. I have a group that I, I actually just met with them right before this meeting. Really smart parents and, you know, we're also talking about ways to, you know, build capacity at both, at both sides of the school and of parents to engage in school. So like what conversations need to be had, what supports need to be put in place. So, yeah, that's something we're interested in.
And final, I guess, comment, last question. So as somebody that's worked in the federal government for thirty years, has transcended political administrations and has seen initiatives come and go and budgets get zeroed out, and I actually was in a job under, it was a priority of one administration, that the function actually got zeroed out, so I had to find a new home. So my, my point is, a lot of the D E I investments will, will drop dramatically. And, and grant, this is my opinion, I hope, I hope I'm wrong, but, you know, our, our grant funding, I, I just think that the leadership that the federal government may have shown or the grant programs could be at risk. Have you heard any rumblings or thinking or? I mean, I assume that the grant that we have is a one or a multi-year grant. We don't, even though they might try to dry it up, we're still going to get whatever.
Yeah, we'll see. I know that they just passed the Educator Diversity Act right before, was it last month? I think it was.
Was it signed by the president?
It was signed by the governor.
Oh, in Massachusetts, okay.
Locally, yeah, so.
A national.
I mean, I, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but, you know, if, it sounds like there's going to be a shift to the state governments. And so here, I think that could be different than other states. But yeah, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of help coming out of D C.
But the teacher shortage is across the board. I mean, so something has to be done to get, you know, those numbers up. And so we can still do the work.
Yeah. Well, I know what, what they propose to do to the Department of Education, so I, you know, hopefully there'll be some grants to the states or something to help recruit, but.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the plan. I'm, in talking about hiring, I, I know that we kind of have two separate issues here, right? We have a hiring in general kind of, I don't want to say crisis, but a hiring in general issue. And we also have a diversity in hiring. So I kind of want to, I'm going to try to limit my comments and my questions more to the diversity side of that, knowing it's a bigger conversation. So the, the new hires and the, that we have here on the graph on page eighteen, how, are you tracking retention on those? Are we retaining the diverse hires that we're hiring over the, over these last, what do we have, five years of data here?
We don't have that. I don't have that data. That's something we could work towards with human resources. And Chris has been, you know, great at asking, providing anything. But I think there is some coordination between, I think it's Munis and Aspen. So like, it's not like we can just print out a report. You kind of have to match things up. I don't know the details of it exactly, but it's, it's not like in a number you can just easily get this kind of some analysis that needs to take place. So I think the numbers can be discovered. But no, we don't have, I don't have that.
That would be just great to know, just to see how we're doing, right? Are we, or, you know, the diverse hires we're getting, to Mrs. Lebo's point, they're not insignificant. But just to make sure that they're, that those educators in other positions, they're feeling supported, they're not feeling alone, and they're not leaving. So just knowing that, I think that's probably the best advertisement for our district is if we're hiring people and supporting them in a way that makes them want to stay. I think that would be some interesting data to have.
Yeah, I, I think anecdotally, though, across districts, that is, you know, a problem across the board with retention. I think that I've heard from my peers, I have like monthly meetings that I go to with associations and, and everyone is kind of struggling with retention. And, and actually, some districts say, you know, like recruitment is the problem, retention is. So it's across the board. It's not like what we're doing here in Quincy.
Right. Retention, do you mean specifically on diverse hires or any hires?
Well, we were talking about diverse hires.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So maybe finding out why. I mean, I know at some point, someone had asked about, do we do exit interviews? That might be something that's really useful for you in, in these efforts, right? So I mean, they all work together.
Yeah.
You know, in building the pipeline and, and trying to do all these partnerships. I think, you know, if we're doing all this work to get people here and they're not feeling supported and they're leaving, then it, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, you know?
Yeah, but also, you know, if we aren't bringing people in, then, you know, the feelings of isolation, like you can't really fix through a survey. It's, it's more like we need to change, you know, who is in, who are their peers. So do you know what I'm saying?
Right. I'm just saying, Mrs. Lebo's point, that it's not an insignificant number. And I think we're probably doing better than some communities. So I think looking around, you certainly see the students reflect that diversity. So I feel like we've already got a good head, a good leg up there. So just understanding what we could do better, what we could do differently, knowing that we're not perfect and always. And then during COVID, we were hiring educators on an emergency license, which I believe was good for a year. We're not doing that anymore, are we?
No one's doing that anymore now.
No one's doing that. Okay, so every, so all the educators we're hiring have their full initial licenses? Okay.
Yeah, if they don't, Bridgewater offers a program for them to finish their program and get their license. So that was made available through the S R funds, I believe.
And in these efforts, in the hiring efforts, in kind of really focusing on teaching in the pipeline, are we partnering with Q E A at all on any of these efforts?
Yes, we haven't had a conversation like formally yet, but we have talked about, you know, our partnership in, in applying for the Registered Teacher Apprentice Program.
Okay, yeah, I think anything that we're doing here is only going to be stronger if we partner with them and get their thoughts and their ideas on how to.
Gail and I have kind of spoken in passing, but.
Yeah.
Haven't gotten a meeting yet.
That would be great if, just, you know, build, you would said, mentioned in here, trying to find partners. I think that would be a really smart one to, to gain there. And Mr. Gatto asked about how the vocal data informed your goals. And it sounds like maybe they didn't quite yet. The vocal data didn't inform them. But I think, again, I think these conversations are all interlinked. You know, in the vocal data, we heard students don't act, students were asked if their peers acted how their teachers wanted them to, and that seemed pretty low. Well, that's going to make your teachers leave, right? I mean, if you have a problem with peer-to-peer interaction and fighting and bullying, that's going to make your, it's going to be a little more frustrating work environment, right, to be in. So I think it all is sort of related. So I think that having that vocal data to inform some of your initiatives would be great. Because again, I think that teaching is different now. Teaching is harder now after COVID. And I think that's why you're seeing the pipeline shrink.
Right.
Is that it's difficult. And, you know, kids are, it's, kids, kids need more support now than they did. And we, I think school districts just need to figure out how to do that, right? And I think that's what we're in the process of doing. But I think that vocal data would be really important here. I'm sure.
We aren't losing teachers, though. Our teacher retention is very, very good. So it's, it's the vocal survey with regard to any frustration that the teachers may be having and leaving. That, that's definitely not happening.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have good retention of our staff.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then the, the last kind of, kind of area I just wanted to talk about was, I just, I think everything you have in here is fantastic. There's a couple of areas I'd love to see expanded a little or that didn't really get mentioned. You know, equity in a bigger sense, right? Like opportunities across the district. Are we looking across the district? Does every school have equitable access to these, to different? I know not every school has the raising multicultural kids. And you mentioned Bernazani has a really great program for getting diverse books. Well, what about some of these other schools? So just kind of looking at equity across the district, I think, could be maybe looked at a little bit more in here as well as, I didn't see anything about, you know, L G B T Q kids, just what we're doing to support them. I know the Safe Schools, we've partnered with Safe Schools program before on that topic. And just seeing, you know, seeing that reflected in here and continued, I think is a really, would be.
That's Mars area.
Yeah, what, equity, diversity, inclusion. I, I feel like maybe it's a crossover, but I didn't see anything in the S E L plan specifically on L G B T Q issues. So I thought maybe I'd see it in this one. So maybe just between the two, just to be sure that we're.
The specific partnership you were talking about, Safe and Welcome Schools, that program, she brought that in last year, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just love to see that reflected in one of the program improvement plans. And is the apprenticeship, kind of, last question, but it's circled back to the first topic, sorry. The apprenticeship that you were talking about, is that for students of diverse backgrounds or is that for any student?
The funding for that, I, I believe is for diverse students and/or people going into high-need areas. So like E S L, special education, STEM, so that's how they're phrasing it.
Okay, okay. I just, I think it can get really messy when you, you know, in tackling the pipeline, but also trying to stay in the diversity sort of lane. It's difficult. You want to give all students opportunities. But where this, the funding is probably specifically for certain things.
Right.
And just trying to make sure we're, we're hitting as many things as we can. So I, I think we could just, you know, I know the L P A C hasn't met in a while and they're trying to get that back up. So those, those are the things I'd like to see a little more student-based and just kind of a little more expansion of what D E I means in some of these groups, not just race, not just teacher equity and diversity. Just a little bit more with next time, maybe, I think. That's, that's just all I was thinking that might be a constructive piece of information. But I think it's great. I think what you have here is solid. And I'm excited to see the partnerships you'll get to make them even better.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to ask the superintendent one thing. Could you, you don't, you wouldn't have this information at the top of your head, but could you let us know how many openings we have currently?
How many openings?
Yeah.
Yes.
To, to anybody that's involved in the schools.
Yeah.
Not necessarily bus drivers and those people, but anybody that's involved in the education of the.
Basically professional staff, paraprofessional staff or?
Professional staff primarily.
Mm-hmm, sure.
And not just, not just, I mean, even people like security guards and anybody that's really working with the kids, so.
Sure.
There's very few. It's like a couple of long-term subs, a dean, some speech pathologists, but it's very few.
Yeah, I think it's probably very few too, but we could know.
It's a handful, I would say, if that. And there basically would be the high-need areas that you would typically see with finding, having difficulty finding.
Some languages.
Someone for that person.
Languages and some, some courses.
I would say it's probably less than five at this point for the professional staff. The paraprofessionals, we're, you know, constantly looking for, just because we have move-ins that would need a one-on-one, for instance. So that's why we have a constant posting for them. Security is, is fine. And obviously, bus drivers and bus monitors, we're looking for them. And clerical is solid. So for the most part, we're doing really well. And then our professional staff, we can get you the, the numbers on that, but I think it's less than five. It might be closer to two or three.
Okay, thank you. Yep, I'm fine.
Hi, Kim.
Hi.
Thank you for all of this. And can, can you just remind everyone, when did you come on board?
I'm in my third year right now.
Starting your third year.
Just starting my third.
Well, I'd like to say in that short, short amount of time, which is, you know, we take time to learn about a system and see what we're doing and then try to bring in what we need. The partnerships with all the colleges and the grants and all that, it's been amazing in that, in that amount of time. And I want to say thank you for that because that's important. And, and, and the work you're doing.
Mic phone, I think.
My mic's on.
Over there?
Yep. Did he just?
Is that a?
It is, I know. Is yours? That's interesting. So I want to thank you for that because I, you know, I know when you first come into a system, you have to learn about what we're doing and what our needs are. And I think you've done an amazing job bringing all this together. And, and to your point, and what we all know is, and you made the statement, that when we have diverse educators, the students, you know, feel more comfortable and maybe they're more inspired and. In education and, you know, maybe there are people that would want to come to teach, you know? So is that, is that anything that you've, that you've thought about?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah.
I thought, you know, I think that, and, and also if you're looking in Quincy, you know, we have a lot of social media sites. We all know about Q I E, which is, you know, they have thousands of people that follow that. And it might be a good place for us to post some of these opportunities because the college piece is amazing to have this opportunity for people, if they have a degree in math or something, to be able to get their education certification. And if you put, hey, if you're looking to, you know, you have a degree and, but you want to pivot into education, we have these opportunities. And it might be a place that has a big reach of people in the area and the community that might want to teach.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, so. But thank you for all of that. And I also know that in the work that I do, when we have opportunities for people, it's hard. You put it out there and you get frustrated because you're like, this is a great opportunity. You can, you know, the free education. You can, you know, the free education or what these- can be a little bit difficult to do. Done, thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
So I had one other question. We did have, and this might be for more curriculum-wise. We had someone reach out to myself and another colleague about doing something in May for Asian American Awareness Month, and we do Black History Month. And is there a way that maybe we can use that opportunity to kind of highlight their culture during the month of May? You know, the books and the lesson plans and things like that. So I just want to throw it out there for you guys to consider and maybe think about it. It might be a good opportunity to highlight that population for us.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, we're good, all right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Motion to accept the plan.
Seconded by you.
Seconded by me. All set?
All set.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you so much.
Kim, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know why mine, mine's not working, but see? I had mine off.
This is, this one's-
That, this one's you.
No, I'm not in my seat. This, I'm, I'm you.
Oh, that's right. Oh, there you go. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, well, this is going to, a continuation of our meeting. We're going to hear from Mr. Quinn about the Math Program Improvement Plan.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Perkins, and members of the S L T. As always, it's a pleasure to update you on all the wonderful math happenings across the district. We're incredibly fortunate to have a dedicated team of 11 math specialists who support all our elementary schools and two of our middle schools. The mathematics program identifies and supports students who face challenges in developing foundational math skills. Students are selected by the Integrated Learning Team, I L T, based on assessment results and overall math performance. The goal of the intervention is to strengthen and reinforce students' understanding of key numeracy skills and concepts. Once students are identified, math specialists analyze the data and develop targeted action plans using evidence-based materials and activities. A list of those resources and interventions can be found on page six. Last year, the math team contributed to the district's math goal by enforce, by focusing on enhancing students' math fluency and number sense. In addition to providing small group instruction, math specialists pushed into classrooms to co-teach lessons to facilitate centers and address students' needs in real time. The team maximized every opportunity to support students' growth. Several team members led what they called Snacks and Facts, using 15-minute windows of time to engage students in math games while the students ate their snacks. Whether offering extra time with illustrative mathematics games or introducing new ones, this additional practice helps students reinforce and solidify their learning. On page seven, you can see that we achieved our goal at every grade level. Our second goal, outlined on page eight, focused on prioritizing opportunities for parents to gain information, knowledge, and skills needed to support their children's math journey. In November, we hosted showcasing illustrative mathematics with I M consultant Maureen O'Connell. This parent academy provided families with opportunities to ask questions and experience the instructional routines their children engaged in daily. Parents left with copies of I M games to play at home. The event was so well-received that we had families who couldn't attend asking for another session. So in response, we brought Maureen back in April to ensure everyone had a second chance to participate. In January, the math team, along with Principal Profetio and Assistant Principal Babcock, along with some other Snug staff members, hosted a Title I-sponsored family game night for Snug Harbor families. Families had fun learning new board games while participating in important social skills, such as taking turns, accepting defeat, and collaborating as a team. Several copies of the games featured during the event were raffled off. And for those who didn't win, we had a table of donated, gently-used board games that were available for families to take home. The event was a great success, with over 30 families in attendance. In February, math consultant Annalise Record was scheduled to present a session titled, Fluency Doesn't Just Happen. But due to inclement weather, it was postponed and rescheduled for this past October. During the session, Annalise guided parents through the progression of math literacy and demonstrated how to build number sense through engaging games. Families took home cards, dice, and copies of the games that were used during those activities. Annalise also shared helpful videos and resources for parents to support their children's learning at home. All of these resources are also available on the Q P S website. Annalise will be back in April for part two of Fluency Doesn't Just Happen. This time, the concentration will be on the progression of multiplication and division. Our third and final goal from last year, which can also be found on page eight, was to update the math pacing guides. With the implementation of our new core resource, illustrative mathematics, the previous guides no longer aligned with the unit progressions. To address this, a team of educators from all six grade levels collaborated to revise the pacing guides, ensuring that they better reflected our district calendar and met the needs of our students. The updated guides have been shared with staff. Copies are available on the grade-level shared drives. Samples of these documents can be found on page 18. Now I'd like to shift to our math team goals for this current school year. If you look on page 11, you will see that our first two goals mirror the district M C A S and MAP goals. The team will aid students in their math journey and support classroom teachers. In addition to giving targeted instruction to our students, the team will support teachers with the administration of the MAP and help their schools facilitate their I L T meetings, where they'll analyze the data, share findings, and make adjustments to their schedules as needed. If you turn to page 13, you'll find Goal Three, which focuses on the math team designing and developing a Foundations of Math course for Q P S teachers, to be offered during the summer and possibly after school. This goal will be evaluated based on the course completion and enrollment numbers, with the course ready for implementation by June 2025. We've been discussing the possibilities of this intervention for a few years now, recognizing that new teachers often come to us with widely varying backgrounds in mathematics. As math specialists, we understand that math learning goes beyond the basics of addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. It's crucial for math teachers to grasp the developmental trajectory of math sense from early numbers and counting. Moreover, it's important for teachers to recognize that what they are teaching has a far-reaching impact beyond their current school year. For instance, one-to-one correspondence in kindergarten is foundational for real-world problem-solving, such as determining whether there is enough supplies for everyone in the classroom. While this may seem like a simple concept, it reappears throughout a student's education from elementary to high school. In higher grades, understanding one-to-one correspondence is key when students plot points on the coordinate plane and work with input-output tables, and later in function tables. The more our teachers understand the progression of how students learn math, the more confident they will be when they are teaching. And that confidence, in turn, will positively influence the students in the classroom. Also on page 13 is our fourth and final goal. By June 2025, the math team will collect and curate at least 10 digital math resources for families to combat the summer slide. A link to those resources will be shared in the school's June newsletters and posted on the Q P S Math Resource page of our website. Success will be tracked by the number of resources collected and the engagement metrics from the website. This goal is a direct result of parents reaching out to members of the math team, asking for recommendation of math resources for use over the summer. We currently have resources on the Q P S website, but navigating through all the links can be challenging. We're looking to create a one-pager that could be, that would contain our top picks of websites and activities that students can enjoy over the summer. I'll work with Kathleen Jalani, our new digital communication and web accessibility specialist, to format it in a way that's easy to find and use. And as mentioned before, we'll ask the principals to send out that link to parents in their June newsletters. The math team is proud of the work that we've accomplished this last year, and we look forward to implementing our 2024-25 Math Program Improvement Plan over the next six months. And at this time, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Grade five score is no concern. I'm wondering if Deezy's asking our grade-five students to do things they're not capable of doing yet developmentally. Do you see the curriculum based at a concrete level or an abstract level in that particular grade level?
No, it definitely-
That's the answer to the question.
There's definitely a change as we get into fourth and fifth grade with it being much more abstract, absolutely.
Right. So are we asking our kids to run before they can walk? I mean, it, it just, it just strikes me every single year, we have a problem in grade five. And it's got to be something more than our teaching. It's, it's got to be something else. Maybe it's the curriculum that's not, it's not geared for grade five, frankly. Maybe we're asking them to do too much and not ready for it. Just a thought. I was wondering, what are your thoughts on it?
I think- That's a hard, that's a hard question. As a former fifth-grade math teacher, I do think it's challenging. I think, I think a lot of things that they're asking is certainly challenging. But I think our students are capable of it. I think with the new illustrative mathematics program, I think we have some really great lessons that can lead them in that direction. It's a lot more comprehensive, whereas Go Math was very, here's the lesson, the next day, here's another lesson. It did not connect. So with illustrative mathematics, it now, there is such a clear progression, especially with things that we find more difficult. When we dissect the M C A S, like fractions, how it starts in third, well, it starts actually before third grade. But when we look at like what they're doing in third grade, where they really dive into fractions, to fourth grade, to fifth grade, it's lined up to really carry over. So that's why, you know, one of the things I talked about with that course is the, teachers need to know where everything is going as well. They need to know where the students have been, and they need to know where they're going, and not be teaching in isolation. So I think as we start to do that, we're going to see a bigger difference with those fifth-grade scores. And with our math interventionists, now that we have math interventionists in all the buildings, you know, we've had, in our last meeting, had a discussion about what are we doing with our fifth graders? You know, how are we targeting them? How are we helping the teachers that we have to target those teach, you know, students? And looking at the data, and not just what the math interventionists can do by pulling them out or working with a small group, but how can the teaching in the classroom change to help support that and those, you know, abstract needs that they need to learn?
All right, thank you.
This is my mic. So you, from Go Math to illustrative math, is this the second or third year that we're doing that?
If, in terms of when we started, la, I, I would consider last year was our first year with three, four, and five with full implementation.
Okay.
So technically, we had not used Go Math the year before, but we hadn't trained the teachers yet. So we left it open to, are you going to continue just using what you've used? And then as you get trained, jump into it, some jumped in right away. Last year, the, you know, the understanding was, in grades three, four, and five, you were going to use illustrative mathematics.
That was a full-on, okay, implementation?
Yeah, so this is really their, started their second year of using it.
So maybe to, to Mr. Bogolli's point, you know, and if you think it's, that this is a better pathway for the kids to really, because if they're going from fourth to fifth grade, and it's more, like you said, it's not as concrete. You know, maybe it's a better, you know, we'll need another year or two to see how that changes the, the results, you know? So it's not like we're ignoring the fact that the fifth grader is maybe challenged by some of the content. It's more that we're changing the way we're teaching them.
Absolutely, yes.
You know, maybe last year's results weren't as, something to pinpoint yet, you know, in terms of how these are. And then also, this is the first year we're having interventionists in all the schools. Is that correct? Did we have them last year?
Second year, second year, yeah.
Oh, so we had them all last year too?
Yeah, yes.
So that, that was my question. I wasn't sure if we had specialists in all the schools yet. And then also, you know, how many years we're doing. The other thing is, and I just want to say, I, I love the extended-day math opportunities for people to, for the kids too, I think that's great. So, okay, thank you. So we'll keep an eye on next year and see how you do.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perdios?
Thank you, thank you for this. This is, this is great, this is really good to read. I went to the parent academy back, back in November, and that was at Central. And it was the first time I had seen that illustrative math, a lot of the lessons and how they teach in that. And just seeing kind of the videos and different things about how it kind of emphasizes a little bit more group work or whiteboards and just a little more collaboration. I feel like it was a lot different, a different way of approaching math than we sort of had before. And similar with S D Math, where we're on kind of the first slash second year of that as well. And it seems like a lot of people are really excited about it. And I don't know that it's going to hit the goals we want, but I like that we're trying a new way of, of doing it. And I think it's going to take more than a year or two to see the results of that. So, you know, but I know everyone's really excited about it. And it was great to see parents come out and learn about it, because all you hear is, well, I don't know how to do the new math. I don't know how to help my kid. And we have actually a lot of math parent opportunities to kind of come in and learn. There's a lot of math mania, I know they did a lot of that at Clifford Marshall. I'm sure they do at the other elementary schools as well. So I think that there's a real effort to engage with parents in this. And I think these new two programs, I'm sure, you know, another year or two out, you'll reevaluate and say, hey, maybe this didn't work the way we wanted, and you'll reevaluate again. But everyone seems excited about them, so that makes me optimistic about trying to, you know, give it another year. I see the numbers, as Mr. Bogolli said, which, you know, some of them are concerning. But the MAP does show improvement, and M C A S, you didn't have an M C A S goal last year, right?
Not for the Program Improvement Plan. We had a district M C A S goal, correct?
Okay, right. So I'm actually excited that, you know, this year, you're looking at that a little more and building on the growth you've made with MAP. So I think, I think that's a good step, and I'm excited to see next year, to see how it goes. I love Action Steps three, I mean, Goals three and four. I love the, the understanding that the ma, for a math teacher to understand where that's going. I think that's really a creative way of looking at it, and I think that's a good idea. And the resources for the summer slide, fantastic. Just a way to keep kids engaged over the summer beyond the summer programs we offer. So I think that's, those are all really great. I'd love to see on the Action Steps, similar to how we have this year for the school improvement plans, like a column for new, revised, continued on them, whether they're a new action step or not. It just helps to kind of know what's new, what we're trying out a little bit differently. And then the math interventionists, just the last thing I want to say is, they are amazing in this district. I-
I agree.
Have personal experience in Miss Davis, Miss McDonald, and Mrs. Quigley. And they just, not just for the kids that need help reaching grade level, but for those kiddos above grade level, to just keep them challenged and engaged. I know Mrs. Davis took a bunch of multi-grade kids, put them together and did some challenging work with them. And I think that it was, it was fantastic for my kids. And I think it's a great way to reach both the, you know, kids that need a little extra and the ki, on both ends. And they are just so- and, and how the impacts they're having, so. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perdios. The ma, the math scores, the MAP scores are great, so it's, you know, and so it doesn't show up in the M C A S. And I really like the goals on page 13 too, but the Foundations of Math course that you're designing, I hope it isn't just too foundational, because I think the problem exists in the more abstract stuff. And I think if we could maybe show all those teachers what sixth-grade math looks like, what the kids are expected to do in the sixth grade, we might have a better, a better shot. I know traditionally, math was not, you know, for teachers my age, elementary teachers weren't really taught how to teach math. They really, they are now to a, to a, to a better degree. Elementary teachers are ta, ta- Elementary teachers aren't, supposedly taught to, to teach math also. I don't think it's the highlight of their thing, but I do hope that that teach, that class that you're designing will really build on some of the other, because if our fourth, fifth grade and our fourth grade is really not doing that well on MCAS, we, we really do need to have something in there that shows those teachers what those kids need in the, in the sixth grade.
I completely agree. And as we, we had our first meeting on this, our first work meeting, we're trying, there's just so much we would like to do with different courses and like, and, and so forth. And it has led to like those conversations about what about three, four, and five and leading into middle school. So right now, we're looking, again, just to give them those, you know, kind of those basics and understanding that, but we do see it like as a part two and, and so forth that this would build. We just don't want to take on too much and, and not do it well. We want to really focus on that, you know, our, our first thought was that progression because it does affect the understanding of what they're doing and how it, you know, you really need to know on either side of your grade. So you're correct, like we, we should be thinking about into sixth grade as well and how it all connects.
Yeah. And, and I think also, this course is not going to be required for them to say.
No.
So is there some incentive? Can we get somebody to give them some college credit for it?
We talked about the, what is, what is it called? The?
Lisa.
Yeah. We're working to potentially be able to give like one in-service credit, which we can do. So that, and obviously the PDPs also make it a big incentive.
But something that might move them up the salary lane if they take a few of those would be nice.
Exactly.
So that's great. I have no other questions. So motion to accept by Mr. Bagoldi, seconded by me, and you are all set. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Perjett Vaughn, the Literacy and ELA Coordinator. It is my honor to sit before you this evening to share this year's Literacy Program Improvement Plan. I've been anxiously awaiting this. I think I might be the last, last one here, so I'm anxious to discuss the impactful work being done through the Quincy Public Schools Literacy Program. Everyone here understands that literacy is the foundation of learning, opening doors to academic success and lifelong opportunities. Tonight, I'll share the program's mission, structure, successes, and goals, as well as its critical role in shaping the academic futures of our students. The Quincy Public Schools Literacy Program exists to equip students with the foundational reading skills necessary for academic success. These skills, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension form the building blocks of literacy and help students confidently engage with texts across disciplines. The program doesn't stop at instruction. It also fosters a love of reading, encourages family involvement, and offers professional development opportunities for educators. Together, these efforts create a culture of literacy that extends far beyond the classroom. The Literacy Program in Action uses a tiered model of instruction based on the Response to Intervention or RTI framework. Details can be found in our program design on pages six and seven, and also in our Literacy Action Plan Appendix on pages twenty-five and twenty-six. In summary, Tier One provides universal core instruction for all students with differentiated strategies to meet varying needs. Tier Two offers supplemental interventions for students at moderate risk of reading challenges. And Tier Three delivers intensive, individualized instruction for students facing significant reading difficulties. Educators use data-driven tools, such as Amplify M-Class and NWEA MAP Growth, to identify students' needs and measure progress. Form targeted interventions that help close gaps. A list of these interventions. Is it back on? Looking back on the goals of the Literacy Program from last year, I will now summarize our progress. You can find this on pages ten to thirteen. As is customary, we measured grades K to three progress in foundational skills with the comprehensive suite of Amplify M-Class early literacy screening tools, and we measured comprehension with the NWEA MAP Growth Assessment and Reading. Last year's efforts yielded notable progress. With the bar graph on page eleven, you'll see that in kindergarten, the percentage of students performing well below benchmark decreased from fall to spring by seventeen percent, exceeding the fifteen percent goal. Grade Two also surpassed its target with a ten percent reduction in students at risk compared to a goal of seven percent. Grade One saw a fourteen percent improvement, just shy of the fifteen percent target. And Grade Three, however, presented a challenge with a one percent increase in well below benchmark students falling short of the five percent decrease goal. In terms of reading comprehension, our students exceeded goal expectations. In the bar graph on page thirteen, district data shows that graded, Grade Two students achieved a fifteen-point increase in RIT scores on the NWEA MAP, surpassing the twelve-point goal. And Grade Three students showed an eleven-point-eight-point increase, exceeding the ten-point goal. These results reflect the program's strength in delivering targeted interventions, but they also highlight areas for growth, particularly in Grade Three foundational skills. I'd like to take a few moments now to look at our historical data analysis. Graphs and charts on pages fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen provide various snapshots of how our students performed last year throughout different points in the year, as well as how they performed in comparison to previous years. The first full-year graph on page fourteen shows that while we didn't meet the specific goal that we set for Grade Three in M-Class, we did increase the percentage of students in Grade Three that were considered above grade level benchmark. In fall, this percentage was at thirty-nine percent, but by spring, it climbed to fifty percent. While we typically set goals for the literacy program that aim to move students out of the well below benchmark category, we can also be proud that in spring of twenty-four, we had the following percentages of students at or above grade level benchmarks. Seventy-three percent of kindergarteners, seventy-five percent of Grade One, sixty-nine percent of Grade Two, and sixty-eight percent of Grade Three. On page fifteen, you'll notice that we now have a three-year history of the M-Class digital platform data. This is a new chart that I've added to demonstrate that over time, we are reducing the number of students at risk by wider margins. We can perhaps attribute this to making our goals more rigorous over the past two years. We're also beginning this, we're also beginning the year at some grade levels with lower percentages of students at risk. For example, when we examine Grade One data, in 2021, 22, we had thirty-five percent of students entering Grade One at risk. That dropped to thirty-four percent in 2022, 23, and to twenty-nine percent in 2023, 24. In the third column, in the end-of-year E O Y column, you can see that with each year, we have lowered the percentages of students at risk. For example, last year, we had just seventeen percent of students at risk in kindergarten compared with two years prior, where twenty-seven percent of students were at risk. On page sixteen, we have four years' worth of historical growth data in comprehension, in comprehension, excuse me. In analyzing this chart, you'll notice that in Grade Two in 2021, the starting RIT is one seventy-nine point six. We can perhaps attribute this to higher, this higher RIT average to the fact that back then, our Grade Two students were taking the K to two MAP reading tests, which has auditory support. Once all students were switched over to the two-to-five growth reading test, you'll see that RIT scores in fall are a bit lower. However, in looking at the growth column, we are showing more growth from fall to spring every year. Grade Two students are now scoring with similar RIT averages at the end of the year without any audio support. Not in the chart, but important to make note of is that RIT scores for Grade Two and Three are very similar to national norms for student achievement for reading in fall, but exceed the national norms by spring. Therefore, therefore, we also exceed the national norms for reading growth in these grade levels. Building on the successes and lessons of 2023, 24, the Literacy Program has set two ambitious yet attainable goals for the upcoming year. Goal one is to improve foundational skills for K to three students, as evidenced by a decrease in the number of students in the well below benchmark performance category. Specific targets include a fifteen percent reduction in kindergarten and Grade One, a seven percent reduction for Grade Two students, and a five percent reduction for Grade Three students. Progress will be measured by using the Amplify M-Class with Dibble's Eighth Edition Comparing Populations Report. Our first goal remains the same as the last, as last year, since we've increased this goal significantly over the past two years. Goal two is to support the district's objective of improving reading comprehension through small group instruction and targeted interventions. Success will be measured by RIT score increases on the NWEA Math Growth Summary Report, a twelve-point increase for Grade Two students, and a ten-point increase for Grade Three students. For our second goal in improving reading comprehension, we are also keeping this the same as last year in hopes that we continue to see the student growth and achievement on MAP Growth Reading Assessment. These goals reflect a comprehensive approach to literacy, addressing both foundational skills and comprehension, while focusing on differentiated support for students at every level. The action steps of the literacy team directly connect to our mission statement and literacy action plan. These are listed on pages seventeen through twenty. While these action steps are related to the literacy program as a whole, literacy team members customize them to meet the needs of action steps created in their individual school improvement plans. Professional development is quite extensive this year and is listed on pages twenty-one through twenty-four. Some highlights include a summer structured literacy course that we customized for QPS educators with Lisa Brooks from the Commonwealth Learning Center. We offered that back in August, and sixty teachers participated. During the Professional Day of Learning on November fifth, we had over twenty sessions of fifteen different literacy-related offerings. Most recently, myself, along with several ELA and reading teachers from all of our middle schools, attended Heart, Hope, and Humanity 2024, which was the National Council of Teachers of English Convention at the Seaport. Other incredible trainings include the writing revolution, Amplify CKLA Coaching, building a data-driven culture for principals with M-Class, goal-setting and growth outcomes, and supporting all learners with Amplify interventions. Since our program mission includes families as critical stakeholders in this equation, we also provide training and communication through parent academies. Just last week, and since parent conferences are at this time of year, we had a parent academy for families in K to two on supporting your child's literacy development at home. And when we return after winter recess, we have a similar one for families with children in grades three to eight on January fourteenth. We worked with the National Center, Center for Improving Literacy, which has an entire website and toolkit for families. We provide interpreters for these parent academies, and recordings and slide presentations are shared on our website. On page twenty-seven, you'll find a full list, which is still just a sampling of the many other kinds of family engagement, school-wide literacy celebrations, and extended day opportunities that are offered. The literacy team's commitment to improving outcomes for every student is unwavering. By focusing on early identification, targeted intervention, and family engagement, the program continues to build a culture of literacy that truly transforms lives. In closing, I want to emphasize that our Program Improvement Plan is a team effort. From the dedicated educators who implement these strategies, to the people sitting around me, all of you, and to the families who foster a love of reading at home, every stakeholder plays a role in the success of our students. Together, we are not just reaching children to read, we are unlocking their potential and preparing them for a future filled with opportunity. As always, thank you for your unwavering support, and I welcome your questions.
Anything, Mrs. Bagoldi? You good? You good? Okay. Mrs. Perdios.
Just, I think this is great. The one thing I wrote down that you said that I thought was really insightful was how you looked at this fall RIT scores, and they were similar to the state, and then you looked at the spring RIT scores, and they exceeded the state. And I think that's really a good test of, is what you're doing working for our students here? And I think that's a really great measure to look at. So I appreciate you pointing that out, and I think this, this looks fantastic.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perdios. Mr. Cahill.
You're set. Doug?
Doug, did you want to go? I'm sorry, I didn't say, Mr. Gottrup.
He's good.
Oh, you're good.
I, I really didn't have much just to comment, and thank you again to reiterate. And I, and I like the three-pronged approach that you're taking to the whole program, the professional development and the family parent academy is, you know, all those opportunities for the kids are amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
And it comes out in the results at the end, right? So thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of very quick questions and a comment. Why don't, the cursive writing club, does anybody go into that?
Yes. Yes, they had to turn students away, unfortunately, so they have to have another staff member to expand it. Yeah, I think there's about fifty.
Kids can't, the kids can't read cursive.
Yeah, and well, so we actually, this year, in addition to the, well, it came out, the cursive writing club came out of, I want to thank Mrs. Owens for this, because in Amplify CKLA, there is cursive in grades three, four, and five. However, it's not a printable that they publish. So I worked with, with everyone's support to get those documents published, so every student in grades three, four, and five has a cursive writing handbook, and the teacher has a teacher guide. But, you know, we don't want to miss those students that didn't have it in fifth and fourth, so that's how the writing club, so came about, yeah.
That's great.
Who, who knows how to do cursive enough to be able to teach it? That's probably, I do, because I went to Catholic.
Santa blows.
But I'm just wondering if, right?
My other question is.
It's really helpful for dyslexic students, too. Cursive. Cursive is very helpful for students who have dyslexia.
Is it really?
It is, yeah. Yeah, so that's a positive addition to all of this.
It's good to know. And what about the schwa day celebration? What is that?
I actually knew you were going to ask me that question. So National Schwa Day is in April. So the schwa is the most common vowel sound. And, and so I've actually had conversations with the author of a book called What's All the Schwa About?, Yvette Mans. And she has spoken with us in conjunction with some of the professional development that we do on November fifth, and there's all sorts of activities. There's a whole website of things that teachers can do. Our teachers really grab hold of this and let her see. They make T-shirts, and it's pretty fun. Last year was the first year that we did it, and it's just going to expand.
It sounds like.
Just shining a light on, you know, something that is sometimes difficult to teach, but is the most common vowel sound that we have in the English language.
And, and my last one is actually a comment from Mrs. Hoogly, who was not here this evening. She's ahead of another meeting, but she had asked about on the Reading Across America Schoolwide Celebration, where you have people come in, that if we could maybe try to get some more diverse people in, and certainly if you looked at the Boston Chinatown Neighborhood Association Aquarium and get some professionals from there to actually come in and invite them in to read to the kids across the schools, it would be really helpful.
I think that's a great idea.
She wanted me to bring that up.
We do that with World Read Aloud Day, which is on that list. We do, we are able to have diverse authors from all over the world on that day in February. Most of those are virtual, but I think in person within Quincy would be amazing.
Yeah, because we have so many diverse professionals, professionals working and living in our city. So motion to accept by Mrs., Mr. Bagoldi, seconded by me, and you are all set. Your proof is.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.